You do.
Good, good evening. It's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started for those that are here and online for this evening's town hall. First was just welcome everyone to this. This is our third town hall that we've done in about the last four months, which is a pretty aggressive pace based upon historical nature, but I think it's a culmination of coming out of a pandemic and wanting to find different ways to connect with the community. Whether it was out at the golf course or hearing from our new police chief earlier this year. And when we brought on a new fire chief, I was like, well, I'm going to give you the same opportunity as the police chief to introduce yourself to the community. Let them know what you're about, where the department might be headed, what you've learned, you know, just give that basic overview. The difference was, you know, our chief Tracy Vasturche had been here, you know, so he kind of got to do it right out of the gate. But we let the chief bloom get a few months under his belt as he's coming up on 100 days in the position to start having that conversation with the community so that they could hear and learn a little bit more. So that's what we're really here tonight is to hear from the chief and get to know him and introduce him to the community. So I'm just going to do a quick bio, just so everyone knows who he is online and then from there we'll turn over to chief and let him go for the rest of the evening until the end, where we can tag team any questions that might come up. Or turn it over to one of our council members like council member Hogan, who's here in the audience. He's ready to be on the hot seat as the liaison to the department if necessary or or former liaison from that standpoint, but we appreciate him being here. So with that, Chief Bloom. Chris originally is from Idaho and came to the city of Meridian, the Meridian Fire Department with 21 years previous experience with Tucson Fire. During his time with Tucson Fire, he served as battalion chief of the Special Operations Division, one of Tucson Fire Department's highest ranking leadership positions. Just described coming back home, a dream situation. Chief Bloom's experience includes administrative administrative and operational assignments as well as leadership roles and while on fire, emergency management, paramedicine, hazardous materials, technical rescue and community risk reduction. Chris is a current instructor for the National Fire Academy. He is an expert in fire ground and emergency management. Chief Bloom's background and considerable knowledge and experience, the day-to-day operations of fire departments and also understanding the fire personnel make him a perfect fit for the challenges that a growing community like Meridian will face. Chief Bloom also has been instructor for firefighters beyond borders, an organization that connects firefighters in Arizona with the firefighting community in Israel to support one another in times of need. Chris is executive fire officer, graduate author and speaker focused on values-driven, mission-focused leadership for the fire service. A few personal facts about Chief Bloom, that he and his wife Kat have a four-year-old son and pleased to say that they were able to find housing in our community after a short stint in a trailer looking for that right opportunity. He has family in Emmett, Northern Idaho, loves snow ski and his own words is absolutely not a golfer. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Bloom.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Before we get going, I just would like you to get a feel for your Meridian Fire Department. So we'll start with a brief little video. Well, I tell you what, we'll just kind of move on beyond that little piece, just a little bit more information about me and who I am. So I'm the son of Tom and Karen Bloom, who are, as the mayor indicated, Idaho natives. They're from Emmett, Idaho and Lewiston. I was born in Boise and after an excursion down to Arizona to attend the University of Arizona where I graduated, I began looking for a profession that would provide me an opportunity to serve. And this career choice of being in the fire service has allowed me to dedicate my time and my life to the service of others. To serve the community and the Meridian Fire Department has been the highest honor and is truly a highest, the high, my highest calling. As the mayor indicated, I'm approaching the first 100 days of my tenure as your fire chief of the city of Meridian. And what I can report to you is that the Meridian Fire Department as an organization is healthy, it's strong, it's motivated and engaged. The Meridian Fire Department exists to uphold the internal mission, vision and organizational values to actively serve the community of Meridian. As we move forward, it's important to articulate what the organizational vision for the future looks like. It has been said that a vision is an acute sense of what is possible for the future. The growth that is and will continue to occur in the Treasure Valley demands innovative and integrated approaches that will match and exceed our community's expectations. As a premier fire service agency, we, the Meridian Fire Department, are continuing to strive to do better. Over the next five to 10 years, the Meridian Fire Department has a vision to improve our services, exceed our community's expectations and foster a progressive and innovative fire service organization. On behalf of the entire department, I can affirm that our envision also includes our commitment to achieving a benchmark level of service for the community, dedication in the education and training of the public to promote and sustain citywide safety as well as continuing to develop a department that is recognized and acknowledged for dedication, tradition and loyalty in serving the community and reducing our community's risk. My organizational vision is arranged around seven areas that are intrinsically linked to one another and are the drivers of an innovative and progressive fire service organization. The first of these is culture. Culture is ultimately the driver of internal and external outcomes. It is who we are. Over the next five to 10 years, we look to enhance our alignment between the community, the elected officials, the management, the labor group, community representatives and the Meridian Fire Department workforce. Additionally, we're going to promote an organizational environment that's adaptable, open to change, innovative and focused on continuous improvement. Number two is data. Data drives decisions and there's this, as the saying goes, without data, what you have is just an opinion. We will continue to utilize data, quality data for evidence-based decision-making to assess and produce the best outcomes. We're going to implement advanced data analytics that allow us to make informed decisions. We're going to focus on developing outcome-based data for all measurements of our operations and functions within the organization. Additionally, we're going to cross-reference that information in the sharing of data with other city departments to guide our planning, development and community risk reduction. Number three is health and wellness. Creating a safe work environment is no accident. It requires deliberate focused attention and it is very intentional. Meridian Fire Department will champion proven research on the health impacts specific to the fire and emergency services to evaluate the risks associated with the profession and the long-term impacts of our employees' well-being. We are and we will proactively address the increasing mental health challenges facing the fire and emergency services. Finally, we will continue to adopt and support fitness and wellness initiatives as well as best practices throughout the whole organization and incorporate this into the philosophy of the all aspects of our operations. Number four is partnerships. It is understood that as a fire service organization, we have the opportunity and privilege to work with a wide range of partners to serve our community and develop local strategies and create new approaches to providing services more effectively. Over the next five to 10 years, we will promote our relationships with other internal departments as well as those outside agencies that are routinely allied with us as responders to emergencies and incidents. Realizing that the Meridian Fire Department serves to exist, this is all, or serves the community is how we exist and why we exist. This is only accomplished through healthy relationships that have been established over decades of hard work. Whether it's with the Ada County paramedics and the joint powers agreement or auto aid with our regional partners and the partnership that we have with our rural fire district, ensuring these relationships are healthy and mutually beneficial is a long-term goal and strategy. Number five is sustainability. Meeting the demands of the community in a fiscally responsible manner is essential, if not critical. Ensuring that we provide the community with a responsive, well-positioned fire department will require the community to invest in the additions of fire stations seven and eight as well as the apparatus and staffing to support that mission. The future of the fire and emergency service rests upon the membership that's within it. The relevance of the fire service will be found in our ability to recalibrate, redesign and being willing to pivot, ensuring that we are able to address the challenges and opportunities that are presenting ourselves to our community. Failure to address these issues will lead to what Max Bazerman, an author, calls predictable surprises. Predictable surprises are those events or outcomes that catch us by surprise, yet we're both predictable and preventable. Number six is technology. As we emerge from a year of pandemic, if there's one thing that the public safety and public service has been able to learn and understand is the ability to rapidly leverage evolving technology to improve our services to our communities. Recently, I heard that for those of us in public safety, COVID-19 required us to essentially build an airplane while we were flying it. Moving forward, we will develop and cultivate a change mindset to help anticipate and support the appropriate use of emerging technologies and encourage the development of new technologies. Whether this is reducing our carbon footprint, green energy technologies, the life-saving technologies through advanced cardiac monitoring, the utilization of drones and UAVs or monitors that allow our command staff to monitor firefighters' biometrics and push out notifications during ad-first situations. Finally, number seven is creating and building an inclusive work environment. Understanding the community's characteristics, culture and the diversity that exists is critical to long-term organizational and community health. This understanding helps determine the most appropriate way to serve and interact with all of our community members. Internally, we will be focused on providing an environment where our membership feel that they are capable of being successful and are appreciated for the value that they bring to the Meridian Fire Department. These seven items require intentional and deliberate focus on our internal and external partnerships. Internally, my attention is on succession planning and cultivating leaders and managers that are qualified and capable of stepping up into advanced leadership roles. Additionally, focused attention will be placed on ensuring that we are properly equipped, expertly trained and that our experiences are matched to meet the evolving needs of the community. It goes without saying that Meridian's horizons have changed, well, so too have the vertical spaces of Meridian's horizons. Our ability to serve the Meridian community from a well-staffed and well-located fire stations will contribute greatly to our Idaho Surveying and Rating Bureau, ISRB, rating. Over the next several years, it is my intention that through increased staffing, equipment and appropriately deployed appropriately deployed resources, we will improve the city of Meridian's rating from a three to a two. This improvement correlates to better service to our community, better delivery of service to our community as well as a reduction in the insurance rates to our residential and business partners. Additionally, it is my intent that the Meridian Fire Department will approve, will pursue accreditation status from the Center of Public Safety Excellence. Meridian is currently in the path of being the first accredited fire department in the state of Idaho. Accreditation is a process that ensures and validates that the resources that are being provided to us by the community are utilized in the most efficient and effective manner, consistent with the community receiving the service that they expect. This achievement is a long-term vision. Demonstrating, however, accountability and value to the community is in alignment and supports the mission, vision and values of the community's expectation of their fire department. Externally, we have developed touchpoints that will ensure our continued access to the community and our partnerships all across the valley. To maintain, our fire department is driven and is sustained by our ability to maintain connected and engaged with our community. The Meridian, the Meridian Fire Department is, is able to demonstrate their value to the community through impacts and outcomes. We will be obsessed with positive impacts and outcomes for our residents. Being our best is our public's best chance. Having a vision for the Meridian Fire Department is not an end state, rather it's a long-term continuum. Having a shared vision provides the organization and the community with a horizon where we are going. Myself and the senior leadership team will provide that dashboard, which allows the community as well as the organization to see and measure how we are performing on our path of achieving our desired state. To support this, the Meridian Fire Department will develop a five-year strategic plan starting this fall. This will involve the organization as well as community stakeholders that will facilitate the process to chart the course for the Meridian Fire Department that can be measured, evaluated and built upon. Overall, we aim to continue building the professional reputation of the Meridian Fire Department as the premier organization that it is. I look forward to fostering and maintaining a work environment that builds servant leaders. I take it as a privilege to serve my department, my community, standing shoulder to shoulder with the fine men and women who are also here to serve you, your family, your neighbors and the greater, the greater Meridian community. Community is central to everything that we do. We believe that embracing an integrated approach through care, competence and courage will enable us to meet the community of Meridian's expectation and facilitate our growth and proudly serving all of its citizens. As I've indicated earlier, a vision is largely what we hope for in the future. However, it is worth discussing some of the current topics that have been the drivers of this future vision. I would like to specifically revisit a few of the points that I discussed earlier. On, on two fronts, I'd like to discuss the topic of sustainability. Let's first look at the, talking about the growth that is driving the community's need for fire stations seven and eight. And if you look at this map, you see fire station seven indicated at Eagle and Lake Hazel and station eight located at McDermott and Eustick on two ends of the community's boundaries. One is in the northwest and the other is in the southeast. These two stations are essential to ensuring that we're able to be to the community who we say we are in our response capabilities and meeting our response times. Maybe the next line. It's pretty easy to track what's been going on in Meridian from a data standpoint. The evidence supports that over the past 15 years, this community of Meridian Fire Department has increased their call volume by eight percent compounding over the past 15 years. Last year, the city of Meridian responded, had total apparatus response of 9,500 calls for service from our community. Those calls to the service, calls for service from the community were not met by our standard of five minutes. The calls averaged six minutes and 35 seconds. You can go to the next line. So not only are the call times not appropriate and do not match who we say we are to our community, but our response reliability is on the lower end of the spectrum of what I consider acceptable and what I'm looking for in the future. Response reliability basically indicates that when a call for service from the community comes in, how often is the unit that is responsible for that area, their first in, their first new area, how often are they being sent out to that or for that call for service? Meridian Fire Department is in the low eighties and mid seventies and a benchmark of care and service for the community should be as a gold standard in the 85th percentile. Why this is important is in 2020, city of Meridian put online fire station six. Even with the addition of fire station six, the city of Meridian's response reliability has, has gone down and not improved. Those are early morning indicators of the necessary need for responsive growth in the additions of fire station at seven and eight. Excellent. As a final corollary to that story, it's not just the fire department. When we look at our allied partners with Ada County paramedics, they've experienced and they've been able to note the same shift. In FY 2019, the hotbed of calls was in the downtown Boise area. However, for FY 2020, that shift has occurred where Boise, downtown Boise is no longer the epicenter of call volumes impacting Ada County's Ada County paramedic's ability to deliver service. It's actually shifted to directly over Meridian. So these things, and in consideration of those things, are the reasons why fire station seven and eight are essential and critical to the long-term vision of the Meridian Fire Department as well as for the community of Meridian. Secondly, I'd like to touch on culture and sustainability. Part of one of the most important parts of this sustainable model for the fire department is the ability to notice and recognize those individuals within the organization that have achieved highly and represent themselves, their community at a very, very high level. And at this point, I'd like to recognize Deputy Chief Charlie Butterfield, if you'll please come up here for just a moment. Chief Butterfield recently completed his executive fire officer program. The executive fire officer program is the flagship for the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. At the national level, the executive fire officer designation is the highest level of professional credentialing a fire officer can receive. After four years, three masters level theses and an applied research defense, Deputy Chief Charlie Butterfield has received this national distinction. Now, these are some important numbers. At the national level, there are 1.2 million firefighters in the United States currently. However, fewer than 4,500 have achieved the designation of executive fire officer. Rough math, that's less than half a percent. The state of Idaho has fewer than 10 executive fire officers that have completed the program and the Meridian Fire Department now proudly has two executive fire officers in their ranks. Chief Butterfield, on behalf of Meridian Fire Department, this is your credential and we're very proud and happy to present that to you. Thank you. And at this point, with the vision completed, moving forward, I'd like to open it up to any questions.
Keith?
Yes, ma'am.
So question from online. I'm a new resident. What is the city's policy or code on open burning?
Okay. So the city's policy on open burning. So there's actually two, we need to be very clear on, on their question. There's the rural fire district and then there's the city of Meridian. There's two separate rules for the rural as well as the city. And we can direct them and if you can assist me with sending them the online flyer that we have produced through fire prevention. There's definitely some very specific rules and contacting the Department of Environmental Quality as well. And there's very specific time ranges and what can be burned, when it can be burned and under what conditions. So we can absolutely follow up with them on that if they're able.
How often should I be changing smoke detectors?
Okay, so I'm gonna, so smoke alarms, we'll talk, I'm assuming they're meaning the batteries. It's in a working unit. If it is a working serviceable unit, the recommendation is, is that a smoke detector gets a birthday. So on your birthday, you change your smoke detector's battery unless it's one of the new lithium batteries and it has a 10-year life, but otherwise recommendation is annually. Yes, sir.
It was about the Public Safety Academy. 2017, Mayor DeWeard asked if I'd like to participate and I agreed. It was one of the best things as a citizen, I think that I could have ever done. I really understood just how professional our police and fire departments are. I got to see firsthand our wonderful training facilities and built an appreciation for fire and safety that I didn't have before. I see many of the police officers as I go to Starbucks and ride around in the city and always wave. Same thing with, I think we call it station 33. It's right near my home, station three in Meridian, but see those folks all the time. But I, but I do have two questions. Okay. There was a, if I recall, there was a young lady in 2017 that set a world record for driving one of your tankers backwards through the obstacle course without taking out one cone. Is she still the world champion? It, she didn't hit a thing and the rest of us all squished them. And then the, I'm hoping that you and Mayor Simison will, will really continue and even expand that. It was just a real eye-opener. And I think you'll get a lot of people that'll be very supportive of expanding station seven and eight just by going through that. So call upon us graduates to help with the campaigning for that when it comes time for citizens to vote. I think we all should.
I really appreciate your commentary. And so for those in the audience that are wondering, the Public Safety Academy is a joint academy with Meridian Police Department. It's open to anyone who's 18 years and older. And it actually is going to begin again this year, starting October, I'm sorry, August 12th. It'll run for 10 weeks and there are still some vacancies in this upcoming academy. And if anybody is interested, if they can contact our public education office and we can make that available online as well to sign up for that. Thank you for the kind words. Thank you.
Chief Bloom, if I could also just follow up on what Rand mentioned, just for everyone's knowledge, from, if I may, great advice on getting people from the Public Safety Academy to participate. I just want to let you know we have the funds, we've been saving the funds to, to build these two stations. So there won't need to be a vote except for at city council. They will be the ones that will determine whether or not to move the funding forward now or in the future. So when we get to the budget time, we'll call upon you and your friends to come and hopefully let the council know the value and importance of those. Look forward to it.
Chief, we have a question from online. Are you currently hiring? And if so, what are you looking for in a new member of the team?
Outstanding question. Actually, we just completed. we just completed a hiring process. We haven't completed the hiring process. We've completed the solicitation and are about to start the process. And believe it or not, it was surprising that for one position, City of Meridian Fire Department for a lateral paramedic firefighter, we had 17 highly qualified applicants. What I would say we're looking for are individuals that are values-driven and mission-focused that have servant leadership in their heart and want to do a good job for themselves and for the community of Meridian.
Chief, when are you going to start tours of the fire stations again?
Excellent question. I actually had this conversation this past week with our education specialist and Pam Orr has indicated that they're beginning those starting this week due to the mask mandate being removed. So those can be scheduled again through Public Education or Public Education Division.
That's all the questions we have online.
Any other questions?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you talk about the relationship with the Meridian Police Department that you've been able to establish and where you see that going from your perspective?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great question. I've had a wonderful opportunity of meeting Chief Buster Chia as well as his command staff. And the relationship is a very positive, one that has a huge potential for even more positive growth. We do, you know, it's not police and fire, it's public safety. We share that mantle of responsibility of taking care of the community from two different ends of the spectrum. But we definitely are focused on that, and specifically whether it's drug overdoses or threats that are coming into the community, that sometimes the fire department is on the initial response to that. Even if it's a law enforcement event, sometimes the fire department is there as well. Talking with Chief Buster Chia and his staff, we've also started looking at the opportunity to develop an alternative response model to try and remove some of the 911 system abusers or people that heavily access the system, ensuring that they have access to the resources and care that they need that may fall out of the purview of police or fire department care. So we've been working, we're working, it's a really good, positive relationship.
Chief, we had one more come in online.
Okay.
With the growth that we've experienced in the Treasure Valley, is Meridian specifically hiring any entry-level firefighters? And if not at this time, when would that be happening?
Fantastic question. It's come to me in several different forms of with opening two fire stations, are we going to have difficulty being able to bring in and staff those locations? Whatever's going on in Meridian, it's lightning in a bottle. Everybody wants a part of, being part of the Meridian experience and participating. And certainly, the fire department specifically has never had a hard time recruiting people. And to answer that individual's question, the city of Meridian is looking at hiring eventually in the future with the approval of building Stations Seven and Eight, bringing in entry-level firefighters in the next two to three years.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, we figured out the issue with the video, so we're going to go ahead and play that for you right now. Standby, please.
I could narrate for you. It's a good video.
I, I went ahead and shared the video on social media, so it's underneath the video. And we can provide that as well. We'll post it on social media this evening, so people are able to view that. Thank you.
Yes. You have a question? You're more pleased, please ask, yeah.
Your point two about using more data to help expand the information. What data are you thinking about gathering in addition to what you showed us already? And how do you plan to use that data to help you in the future?
That's, that's an excellent question. So everything that we're able to, when, when we come to the, the community and we ask the city council to approve things, it's, it can't just be that we need it or that we want it or that, you know, people will burn and die. You know, we have to be able to show impaired evidence of the needs and the requests. And so everything gets tied back to a piece of data. And being able to capture that with the appropriate software, you know, today I was just in a, in a meeting today where we were discussing a very expensive software package that, that shows situational awareness. And that's another aspect of what we do in the fire department or the fire service. You know, how well are we servicing an, an area with our ability to respond? Traffic accidents, road construction, all of those things adversely impact our ability to service the community. And so those analytic tools provide us real-time evidence of what we need to do to shift, to change, to monitor, and to provide better service. And long-term, in, in the data, in the reposing of all of that information, we're able to look back and identify trends, whether it's drug and alcohol, abuse and overdose problems that may be spiking in certain regions, where are we having more or fewer car accidents? Where are those restrictions using trends? And, and those things drive decisions. Those things are pieces of packets of data and information that we can collate and put together and create strong arguments for why we do what we do. And again, it's about accountability to our constituents, our community, and making sure that the people, the men and women that we send in harm way have the best information being used for their benefit.
Chief, we have another one online. The map that you showed indicated that there were currently three ambulances for the city compared to roughly seven in Boise. Are there plans to grow that? And what partnerships are, are being in the works?
Thank you for that question. That's an excellent question from online. Yeah, actually, working with, again, Deputy Chief Butterfield in operations and working with our medical division chief, Chief Hendricks, we've, we've looked at this with our, with the Ada County Paramedics. And because of the requirement and the need for space to house paramedic units, they've expressed more than an interest. They want on board with our builds at Station Seven and possibly at Station Six to co-locate a paramedic unit there because of the rapid rise in the demand. And so Ada County paramedics are unable to find land, purchase land, build a, a structure that they can house paramedics at. And so being able to co-locate a unit and work with our regional partners like Ada County Paramedics just makes sense. And so we're absolutely looking at that to bring that service to the community.
Just want to say thank you to Chief Bloom, as well as the members of the Meridian Fire Department that are here today to be part of this and, and get a glimpse about where we're headed. And congratulations to Deputy Chief Butterfield on a well-deserved recognition from that standpoint. I'm not one to, to make things go longer than they need to. So a 38-minute town hall is a great town hall, and hopefully something that people will watch online and get a flavor for, for where we're headed. The people see the immediate needs that we're faced with, as well as the planning that we're doing for the future, about the things that we don't even know that might be coming our way. But as we grow and grow, we know needs are going to change. So thank you for being here and best of luck as we move forward on the needs for providing public safety to our community.